It's seven o'clock and we have meeting orders, if you'd like to join us in the Fledge of Allegiance. Hi, Fledge of Allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Jamie Childs.
Here.
Julie Davy.
Here.
Mark Delito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Mann.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda from anybody? If not, entertain a motion for the second agenda.
Second.
Move to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, your name. Consent agenda. I have a motion for the consent agenda. Move to the second, roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Childs.
Yes.
Davy.
Yes.
Delito.
Yes.
Rand.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you. We also tonight have the NIA consent agenda. I have a motion for that.
So move, second.
Move to the second, roll call please.
Rand.
Yes.
Childs.
Yes.
Delito.
Yes.
Delito.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Motion for adjournment.
Next is audience to visitors, does anybody would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, communications, correspondence and informational items. Various newsletters, comments, IESP legislative stuff. We talked about eleven hundred bills already submitted and they haven't even started the session yet. Some limited notes as well. Awesome, eleven hundred bills. Now, they aren't all education. And then reminder, the FMBO Challenge is Friday night at Convocation Center, boys and girls basketball. Next I have FOIA requests. I believe there was one added and responses included. Any questions on that? Been right along, suspension report. A few more in the high school would like, but... Committee reports. I'll start. We did have an SEF meeting last night. We did elect a new vice chair, the treasurer and vice chair both resigned those leadership positions, but are still on the board. The treasurer, Todd Madden, was elected as new vice chair. So kind of in line to take over that role in another year or two. And then we elected treasurer.
That's right.
Becky Sprecher, yes, correct. And normal agenda, today committee starts in February.
Yeah.
That quick.
Yeah.
And our next meeting is literally almost the last day of February, the month before our last board meeting in February. And that is a grant meeting, so grants are due in probably by the end of this week. And then we'll have a grant review meeting prior to the board meeting. I'm planning it zoning recently, anybody else, committee reports? Idea committee?
Idea committee, not last week. That's an expanded committee now, so we have two high school students, we have some additional staff members, we have some parents on the committee, a lot of one or two community members. Heard a presentation from two of the high school students, or being two high school students. Pretty powerful. And they are both students who are students of color. And talked about their experience. And while I think overall their experience at Sycamore High School and at Sycamore School has been positive, they talked about some negative situations that they have endured or experienced. So I think it was pretty powerful for the committee that they could do that and then start a little bit of conversation and discussion afterwards. So that was, I wouldn't say good, the presentation itself, at least completely, but the conversation afterwards was really good. And then had a conversation about things, programs, strategies, activities that are ongoing in our schools that support equity work. So that was, it didn't have everybody there, so it had to be turned out. Also had the CAC meeting the week before. And I basically showed that group the same presentation that we're showing all the community meetings, the boundary study community meeting. So I went and then sent back, came back from them, which, which is good. All of those meetings, not just the CAC meeting where we discuss it, but all of the community meetings, meeting with the staff. If somebody asked if they've been positive, and I would say, not necessarily positive, people aren't, you know, excited about the changes, but very respectful, very reasonable questions. So we're taking all of that in and we've got, I've been up with two staff groups yesterday and today, we've got two community meetings tomorrow. And Thursday, Weston and Southbury, and then the next Monday we meet with the more staff and the community. So ties up those ten boundary study meetings that we've had, so.
Thanks, anybody else, anything else?
Thanks for inviting the students to be part of the idea committee. I know sometimes I forget what great information they can give us and the discussion that they can have. When I served on the motor committee a few years ago, I just loved them being a part of it. They brought such a different perspective and actually I was pretty amazed how different it was than my own. So yeah, I was excited to see they were invited to be a part of it and then that they offered so much.
It was really good and they were just as much a part of that conversation after the presentation as anybody. They represent themselves in high school very well. But I can't take any credit for them being on the committee, that really was a committee decision. The committees worked really well together, as well as with our consultants, not just the things they recommended. But their voice has been really powerful, so.
Alright. Item six, a more exciting part of the program, Assistant Supreme Head for HR and Educational Programs.
Thanks Steve. Excited to have Spartan TV Junior and Spartan TV join us today. Mr. Walter, Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Dodario, I don't think I saw, yeah, he's back there. They're gonna do some talking, but I can see we have a lot of the participants, so really exciting. I realized I planned to wear my yellow shirt and couldn't get home time to get the yellow shirt on. But you guys are all wearing them, so that's really exciting. Mr. Walter, I don't know if all your assistants are here, so I'll let you kind of speak to that, because I know it just continues to grow. This is one of those programs that I think we've gotten used to, but super unique and we're super lucky to have this. Most districts don't have something. Certainly that puts out the product that these young students and the adults that watch over them do. So I'm really excited to hear from them, the young and the old. So Mr. Walter, if you would like to come up first.
I'm gonna bring up my other directors.
Then bring them all up.
I'm not gonna be the only one under five.
So I think one thing that's unique with Spartan TV Junior as well is their numbers have continued to grow, so we've added the help needed. Because Mr. Walter couldn't oversee all the students that it's become. So really exciting, I'm sure he'll speak to that a little bit.
Thank you for having us here. Decided I probably should have something written down so I don't ramble on, my wife thought would be best, so. Read from this a little bit. But before I begin, I want to thank all of you for letting us come to speak at the board meeting tonight. And we have several Spartan TV Junior kids and their families that are here in attendance to show support for the program. So most importantly, I'd like to have all those kids stand up and come join us. I think some of them were excited because they got to say. I think a lot of these kids were excited because they were hoping to stay past their bedtime. So it's hard to believe that Spartan TV Junior is in the seventh year of the program. Because it does not feel that long ago that I actually was talking to Mr. Extrem about the idea to start up a school program. And it was during this time when I first heard about a TV program that was starting up at Sycamore High School. And I thought it might be the opportunity to start up a feeder program at the elementary level. Never did I think that this program would be as successful as it is today without the support of admin, the teachers and staff throughout the district, the parents who take the kids to and from all the practices and all of the different field trips to different sites for locations to film. And without all of the generous supporters that we have and donors, such as Carefree Flowers. And the other fantastic four directors next to me, Michael Corwicky, who's been with me since the beginning, Brooke Wright, who does a lot of the organization and bookkeeping for me, Jake Brenz, who we added this year due to the size of numbers that grew so quickly, we realized we needed more help. And so he was picking up his child and I saw him and goes, hey, and I said, hey, can I ask you for a question? He said, sure, and I said, what are you doing on Wednesdays? And so that's how we were able to get him.
I thought my son was in trouble, so. I was thrilled when he asked me.
And then Joy Walter. This program would not be possible without their help and all the work that they also put into it as well. My hope when starting the program seven years ago was to create an after-school program in the elementary school that allowed students to collaborate together and create something that was bigger than themselves. Something they and that the community could be proud of. My hope is that the program would allow students who may not be in other sports or activities an opportunity to connect with others and make lasting friendships before they head into the middle school setting. Our hope is that students in this program are inspired to and love technology and continue to love learning in the future. And we hope that we're able to inspire them in the future endeavors and have lasting memories from Spartan TV Junior. And so with that, these kiddos, there's a lot of them here, but they're all gonna take a hat, maybe one, I don't know if you guys are gonna go grab one of those hats, and everybody that looks important up here with the names. They all get one, okay, to show support. And then we have a quick video after this that the kids made that explained what Spartan TV is and what we do. And then we're gonna firsthand have somebody that actually was in Spartan TV Junior our first year and went through Spartan TV, through the different programs, all the way through high school and is planning on majoring, that's Nate Miller, and he's going to be major hopefully in college and wants a future career in broadcasting. And then we're gonna hear firsthand from these kiddos and some of these kiddos in the video about what they love about Spartan TV Junior and how they think it's gonna help them in the future. Ready? Thanks to Brooke Wright and her and Jake Brenz for their tech skills, they can sound like.
Hi, I'm Nate Miller and I attend Southeast Elementary School.
Nate, what grade were you in when you decided to start Spartan TV Junior and why did you decide to join?
I believe I would have been in fifth grade, I think it was the first year the program was offered here at Southeast. And honestly, I just thought it was a cool thing to do and something new. And a lot of my friends had joined, so honestly, I just thought it was a cool club to do at the school.
Currently, you are on the high school Spartan TV production team. Tell us a little bit about what it is you do for Spartan TV.
So I feel like I kind of do two separate things, so there's a class offered at high school, teen production. So I meet a couple of people who do sports packages, coaches, players, stuff like that for the class, be creative on that. And then for Spartan TV itself, you know, if you wanna listen to a basketball game, often times we're announcing the basketball games, we announce a couple volleyball games. So that's one thing we'll be doing.
Do you plan to continue using your skills in the future?
Yeah, I think that's definitely something to pursue, you know, starting to look at colleges and I think that's something I wanna major in. And for sure going to college and professionally, the skills I learned are definitely something I wanna use.
What has changed the most in the program over the years?
I mean, I feel like just the access to technology is so much better. I mean, it feels like when I started, you know, we had one camera, everyone was kind of all around the same computer and now everyone's looking at the computer and going off and doing other things, so we're definitely able to do a lot more.
What advice do you have for our current or future Spartan TV Junior students?
I think I would say definitely, you know, keep pursuing it, keep taking the classes either middle school or high school.
Nate, thank you for your time and dedication to Spartan TV Junior. You are forever Spartan in our books.
One of the great things about Spartan TV Junior is be able to meet new friends from other schools. Another great thing is it will help you in middle school, learning how to do online homework and being able to get into a great college.
I love Spartan TV Junior because it can help me make new friends and I love learning about tech. Also, I think it'll benefit me when I get older because I can come back and help kids with different things that they need to learn about tech.
Spartan TV Junior helps me with editing and to get better at it, and it'll help me in the future with being better at recording videos.
I think Spartan TV will help me with my socializing and getting better at computer schools.
I love Spartan TV because it helps me interact with other kids. And even though I spend a lot of time on screens at home, it helps me with tech.
Interviewing is my favorite thing to do. I learned to write the interviewing questions better.
I love Spartan TV because of how much tech we use and I think it could help me with editing in the future.
I like Spartan TV because it helps me gain more friends, helps me edit, because when I grow up, I wanna be a YouTuber.
And I did forget to acknowledge two other individuals that really were a huge help. And that is, we actually have two previous Spartan TV Junior kids. One of them's here tonight, my daughter Josie, and both of them are in middle school. And they actually come back every Wednesday to volunteer and help other kids with the group. So Josie and it would be Amy Lewis, so who's a sixth grade. Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing what they have in a short period of time. Remember when we first came to the high school? Nice job, everybody?
Next we'll have, this is Jill Anderson.
Jill Anderson, I am video and TV production teacher here at the middle school. This year is my fifth year teaching the class at the middle school. Nate was actually in the first class that went through the middle school here at SMS. Before I get into the classes I teach, a couple shout-outs. One, before this was a class at the middle school, it was a club, so it was Spartan TV. And Megan Dorrin, who's our current seventh grade teacher here, was in charge of the club for two to three years before it became a class. So she really generated the interest at the middle school level and carried on from Spartan TV Junior at the elementary level, which is great. Matt Anderson was the teacher at the high school when I stepped into the role here at the middle school. And was just a huge asset to me as far as structure of how the class runs and particularly the broadcasts and how those are set up. So he was great at sharing that information. And then as I developed curriculum and we got those classes up and running, we met weekly to make sure that the skills that we built here bridge to the high school class or the classes that go on at the high school there, so that's great. And then the other part, other than the TV production and the teaching part, there's a whole tech part with the studios and the equipment that we use. And so Steven Jamrock has been phenomenal, he is awesome. He's on my phone and I am not a techie person, as you could tell from the beginning when I could not get the sound going. So I have a lot of texts back and forth to him and help with that. He's here in a heartbeat and does such a nice job, not only just helping me with issues that may arise, but also with helping provide all the equipment, what we need. If I come to him with an idea of something that I wanna do, things that I need in order for that to happen. So he's awesome and it's been great. So to move on to the classes, we have Twenty First Century Skills. So my seventh and eighth grade classes fall in the Allied Arts Department. And Twenty First Century Skills go through all of our Allied Arts. These are really what we base our classes on and the experiences for our students to make sure that they have the skills that they need to succeed in their world. So my seventh grade class that I have is a nine-week class. All seventh graders go through that class. And really what we do in seventh grade is a basic intro to video production. So in that nine weeks, they have skill base where they get to have a paid editing software program for the first time, which they're excited about, because a lot have free ones on their apps or at their computers at home. So when they have more capabilities, it's always exciting for them to use. So we use WeVideo and they learn editing skills. They also have mobile packs and camera equipment. So we learn a lot about how to frame shots properly, different types of shots that we use and things that we use to build quality videos that we want to make. Also motion graphics, music, how to add that. And then by the end of that nine weeks, they're producing a thirty-second piece of some sort. Sometimes we'll do a PSA, sometimes we'll do a club showcase or a commercial. But some small piece that has to have a main idea for their audience to recognize where they can put those editing and camera skills together to produce some sort of content for seventh grade. Eighth grade is a semester long. When I first started this class, it was nine weeks, which is a really short time. I call it a news cycle, so from pre-production to post and doing a show. I felt like students didn't get an opportunity to improve. It was more of just an introduction. So we ended up making it a semester long, so they can go through that news cycle a couple of times. Which we start and we talk about those three phases of production. And the eighth grade class is really focused around that SMS news broadcast. So pre-production planning, they script and they storyboard. Our show is based on what we call news packages, those are the small segments you see within a broadcast. So they learn how to structure together a news package and then plan for that and then go out and film their content, come back and they edit that. Once we have those news packages together, we put together a show rundown. And again, this is where Matt came in handy. He had the structure already, so we have different content area that has to go into a show to make up our broadcast. So we fit news packages into each one of those areas to put that together. And then students break apart into two production broadcasts where they write a script for the broadcast as anchors and put that show together and then write and edit. The nice thing about both of these seventh and eighth grade classes is it is student-run. I mean, from writing and planning to the ideas that they have, I have the structure, but they come up with the ideas. And then also in that studio, they are producers, they are directors, they're running in the control room, they are the anchors. And it's awesome to see, they really do a really nice job. So that's exciting to see.
In the eighth grade, is it a lot?
So eighth grade, there is choice, there's five section, or five selections for their Allied Arts. And they can choose four, but since mine's a semester, that drops them down to three. So they're aware of that and they know that going in. Yeah. So sharing our content, Spur shows the MS Minute and then also the SMS News. We have those up on YouTube, I have a YouTube channel that is SMS News. And then I also have an Instagram site as well, @PsychoMSNews. And that's where we post the content. Beth Fitz and Ryder was kind enough to build a platform for our students before. I was sharing out an email, every time that we had a broadcast, it went to MSL and it fell on student, or on teachers usually during homeroom to show the broadcasts. Now on their Canvas page, which is their learning management system, they go to Student Resources and my YouTube page is linked there. And all of the MS Minutes and SMS News broadcasts that we do get posted, so students can watch them anytime. But then obviously, people outside of the district who don't have Canvas can go to either of those platforms to see the shows. Which is lovely to see. And then lastly, I want to talk a little bit beyond the classroom, so if you can skip ahead one more, please, Mr. Walter. Oops, sorry, one more. Beyond the classroom here, and you know, students love and they get very excited when they know people are going to see their news broadcast. But we also want to create videos that are for a different purpose. So this year we had a nice opportunity. Ian Wheeler from the Sycamore Fire Department reached out to us in October for Fire Safety Month and had a fire safety video contest. So we opened it up to all middle schoolers, but the kids in my class were able to produce videos as part of the class. And so the winners of that rode on a fire truck for the pumpkin bust parade. They got, gave us some prizes, but it was really fun. And then those videos were posted on the Sycamore Fire Department website as well, for everybody to see, so kids were really excited. And then our G-Force Club, which is a girls' STEM club, last year created, they applied for a grant. And so they used the studio and the recording equipment to record a video to apply for the grant, which they received to get funding for materials for prayer restoration out back here at the middle school. And then lastly, just some former students that I keep in contact with, parents that I've talked to. We talked about those opportunities beyond the classroom. Brooke Bolda, who is currently a sophomore, runs graphics and sound and production for her church services on Sunday. So she's used her skills from my class or from classes that she's had here in the high school to do that. We just saw Nate Miller, who's been Spartan TV lifer, which is awesome. Future Studies in Sports and Communication, that's what he wants to do. Maddie Sedevy is a senior this year, also looking at sports communication and media. She TAs for me this year in my eighth grade classes, so she's come back to help in those class. Trevor Bradlau graduated in 2022, spent a summer as a camera operator for minor league baseball team, Schomburg Bombers. Steven Jamrock, the one and only, is here with our district, right? We hired him back, so he went through the program and then worked for our district. Ella Sharp is a sophomore down at Illinois State, she's a double major. And she also works as part of the Illinois State Redbird Production. So she does, she works with their ESPN affiliate and does a lot of their sports broadcasting. But her mom was talking to me, I was sharing this with Mrs. Davy. She came in as a freshman and it's usually Redbird Productions is something as a junior and senior that you have to apply for. She walked in as a freshman and got brought on because of the equipment that she used. She was, just knew all of it from high school and so they were so impressed, you know, they brought her into that. And then Allison Vidalis is another one, she's a film and television major at DePaul University. She is working in production for a network TV series, Chicago Fire, Chicago Med, that whole series, she's a production assistant there, so. She's a production assistant there, so. Lots of opportunities that our programs have brought to our students.
So my job's easy, right? I do, I'm glad we're on that slide right now. Ally's coming in on Thursday to talk to the high school kids about being TV production. I see Steven every day and then Trevor came in earlier and we had some issues getting news out and running. He's like, he's like, "Call me back in, coach." Aside from there being a future, it is nice to see the students in this program continue to give back and that's really a heartening thing. I also have Oliver Pike here with me today, who is a TV4 student. We'll hear from him in a little bit. But it's really nice with TV4. Oliver says, "I want to do X," and I go, "Okay, is it going to get anyone hurt? No? All right, let's do it, let's figure it out." So it's really nice to see someone sort of take the rant as he has this year and really get a chance to dive into whatever it is that excites him about TV production and putting stuff together. So all that is probably. I teach at the high school. This year I took over from Matt Anderson, as you have just made aware. We have 37 students at the moment, 36 in the class and one independent study. There's a bunch of students that are also part of Spartan TV, which you'll all hear from at a later date, who are like, "I would love to take the class, but I gotta, you know, AP this, that and the other thing that's filling out my schedule." So it's a large number of students that are involved and I think that's a really positive thing. Again, the program just seems to continue to grow, which is really, really awesome. Because it's four classes, each class is sort of responsible for different things. So pulling from like what the middle school was doing, TV1, the mainly freshman class, puts out the Spartan Minute every day. It goes out on Twitter and that's sort of just like our daily announcements. So it was like the second weekend, like, "When are we doing it?" And I was like, "Let's get it started. We've got a whole schedule." They go two weeks at a time, different groups. Again, there's 20 students in there, so it's just a rotation over and over again of everyone getting a chance to make some content that has a real audience right away, which is really, really cool. Our TV2 kids move a little bit more into the idea of interviewing. So their big project in the first semester was working with the DeKalb County Historical Society and Carol Meeks. And she's put us in contact with different veterans in the community. And we interview them and get that down. And then they're able to use that for their different programs with the veterans, which is awesome. Like when I heard that was something we were doing, I was super stoked like right away. I was like, "This is a real project for these kids to dive into." So some things we'll do definitely next year, but it was definitely something awesome and I'm glad that we're working with them. TV3, that's where Nate is at this moment. I feel like this is a Nate, like school board meeting. It's real Nate heavy. But they do sports and we also have another student that like runs our blog and sort of edits videos together for us on the backend of things. And then fours, we got three TV4 students, Oliver being one of them. And they get to just sort of be utility players, you know, do what they really, really like, make content, try different things. Oliver has come to me and is like, "I want to do something with slo mo." So we did something with slo mo, right? "I want to do something with car shots." So we did something with car shots. And it's been really cool because those students specifically, they always come with new ideas. "I want to make a music video, I want to put together a movie." And so it's really nice to just step aside and be like, "Yes, yes, do that." So in terms of our community involvement, I've talked about the historical society. And then we also started working with Upstation. They basically came to us and were like, "We want your students." And we were like, "Yes, yes, you do." And so they're going to be working, putting together some theory, doing some things with them. And it was just an organic thing that just came out of just like, "Hey, we want them involved and we want them involved as well." In terms of the stuff we made, I did link the high school YouTube page. That's where the majority of it is. If we didn't make it, Spartan TV made it. And that's basically what's on there for the most part. We're in our eighth season of our new show, putting out episode six next week. So that's been exciting to jump back into that. I talked about our veteran interviews. We also did the back to school video at the beginning of the year. Again, shouts out to Oliver. It was sort of like, it was all over the place and then kind of pieced it all together and made it work. Not only do we do the Spartan Sports, but all of the senior videos when you have the different events, that's Nate and Gable Parry putting a lot of those together. And then we're doing some course trailers for elective classes. When we looked on the YouTube page, it was great, but the ones that are on there are a little old. So we want to get back into that and start doing that again. And then we started putting together sort of back, behind the scenes blogs, you know, YouTube content sort of thing of just like, "You've got cameras, you've got the ability to edit things, make something fun." And so we've been able to put together anywhere from 14 to 35 minutes of just stuff that kids have brought in, transitional bits, just different weird things. We have one group that does tier lists. So last week it was, "I'm going to do a tier list of what's the best water." Again, I don't know, right? Like it just, it works. And so we're really excited to have that and sort of create a place to not only do the news, but also the sort of wacky end of content creation. With that, I'd like to let Oliver speak to his experiences.
TV production is my favorite class out of the entire day. I look forward to it every single day. Throughout my time in TV production, I have learned a lot of the basics on how to work all the cameras, how to be fluent in Premiere Pro, which is pretty close to a asset of speaking another language that jobs are looking for. If you know how to work the editing software, run the cameras, you become a huge asset to employers, to colleges, to places like that. So that has helped me get some doors open. I also, being TV4, I have a lot of freedom to make the class what I want to do. So like Mr. Dario was saying, I love cars. I love Ferraris and Lamborghinis. I watch the car videos on YouTube and I wanted to recreate one. So safely, I was holding a camera out the side of a car, following another car.
Safely.
I had my seatbelt on, I had my seatbelt on. And we filmed these videos. It was so much fun to put together. I would do it again. I would remake the video every single week because it was so much fun. I get to work with different staff people. We did a chopped junior virgin as a Spartan challenge recently. And I called some of the teachers. I called Mr. Swanson from the main office and had them come together and try some food that students made and rate it. So that was super, super fun. And I also really love to direct all of the news shows. I can help different students in different places with my experience, whether that's on camera, running through the script or running the tricaster to help all those students succeed. And then hopefully one day fill my role in TV4 because I know as we get up in the TV numbers, we drop off students. We have a majority in one and two. So really hoping to build those students and build those skills within those schools. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Dario.
Questions, comments, concerns? Sorry, teacher break. Seven seconds.
So how do you, do you have a dream about how it else can grow that it hasn't already, more that you'd like to do?
I mean, it's really great and it's an awesome opportunity, but that's the state. No, it would be awesome if our numbers continued to grow and dictated to maybe spread it out. Because right now it's all in one class period, all four classes at once. And again, I was an English teacher, I'm sorry, right? I want my AP classes. But like it would be nice if there's, you know, for those students to have, you know, more opportunity to have a little bit more one-on-one time with the teacher, have a little bit more structure because there's not 37 people all going around at once. And I think, I think the nice thing with the cable channel is, again, there's like a real audience for the community that we can connect to. So just doing more with that in terms of how do we make the content that we can fill that with that goes beyond just the games and the sports and the news? Like can we get students to make like scripted shows? Can we get anything like that? That could be really cool. I really, I love the TV side of it and I love the contactation side of it. So the more we can lean into that, I think the better the TV program will be.
Very cool.
I was going to say, so maybe an alternative to a standard schedule might be beneficial to help programs like this grow?
Potentially, I could definitely do that. And I know the high school is making some steps even next year. They're going to be offering a sports broadcasting credit. So the students who would have been here but are busy filming basketball games can get credit aside from just, you know, club hours to really extend that. But I mean, I came from, before I was here, I was at a school with a block schedule. I saw the benefits and the downside.
And then the other thought I had was, is there any thought of infusing standard, the standard poker element to Spartan TV? Where, you know, you have, for example, a version of family classics that ties into the English or something about, you know, how physics works in everyday life. They do little video pieces of all that to help educate the other kids and everybody learns all at the same time?
I mean, I love it, that sounds great. Yeah, that would definitely be something that would be awesome to do. I think, again, even as much as the awesome stuff we do in TV production, it also is part of my brand, I'm an English teacher. I'm like, "Oh, I wish we had like a broadcast journalism class where we could teach all that in the more nitty gritty as well at the same time." No, I mean, I'm all for any way we can do cross-proofed things and get different people involved. That's always, that's, those are my favorite things to do.
The physics of safely accelerating the tire with the camera.
He didn't, he said he would remake the video every day. What he didn't say is how much he was upset. And I was like, "It's awesome, you gotta cut it down from four minutes." I was just like, "Oh, come on." No, it's great, but like it's got to be a minute thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we move on, Steve, just a couple other names I think to throw out there because it's fun to see where these kids go and they provided a list. Kind of going back before this was probably officially up by us. I'm trying to think, Hunter Thomas, someone that was heavily involved and then, you know, came back and did special projects for us. So someone that then came back and gave back to us. And then just set up an internship for Tori Canna-Gate. She was part of that kind of 2020 All-Star TV production cohort that came through. So with Steven and some of the others, she's going to come back and do some work with our cops department while she's at college this semester. So a couple of people that went through the program as well.
I seem to remember Ramani Frankman also was involved in.
Yeah, yeah, she was.
I think for freshman year, she said, "The equipment I have in college is half as good as what you have in Spartan TV."
Yeah, yeah, she was part of that group as well.
Thank you very much. Six to seven, Superintendent's report.
Not nearly as flashing as exciting as Spartan TV. Just one agenda item for me tonight, board policy revision. So this is first reading. The revisions were included in the board packet. We're not voting tonight, but just asking that if these are before or after first reading, we can draw on the next round, but really not a lot of substance. I'll let Steve comment.
Yeah, we met a week and a half ago. And a number of sections to review, but I don't think there was, I think we said there wasn't one single actual choice given to us. And third, it was just legal references that are updated. There were a couple of new, newly written portions of the policies, but they didn't give you any choices. This is what it is, it's all mandates. So I think it's interesting to point out one of our follow-up conversations because the policy meeting was short because there wasn't any choices to make. But I think one of the follow-ups, what's interesting is where school districts and the state feel in regards to, you know, 1,100 bills being introduced and the continuum of mandates and where, you know, IAS is thinking things might be going, so.
So just as a follow-up to that, there was proposal legislation in the veto session that would have mandated an exact curriculum for all schools and taken away the choice of schools to have the opportunity to review and make a decision. Legislation that moved out of committee but didn't reach a vote on either House or Senate floor. But those kinds of actions in Springfield are really starting to push superintendents for school districts to really think about just not complying. You know, the feeling being that some of this new legislation coming out may be too far. So I didn't necessarily suggest that that's what we need to do, but with more districts doing that, I think with more legislation coming out like that, I think there's the possibility, and IAS said there are districts that are poised to take that kind of stand across the state. Not necessarily all districts across the state, but some districts in different parts of the state willing to kind of form coalitions in their region to just kind of draw a line in the sand. And then some conversation with IAS, with State Board of Education, just kind of asking what are the consequences? Some of these things where you've taken away local control, what are the consequences if they're not complying? So, yeah, didn't necessarily suggest that quite yet. But I think as this next legislative session opens, there were 1,100 bills and that was two weeks ago. Two weeks ago. So they can pre-file bills even before the legislative session starts. I don't know what that number is today. I can guarantee you it's not 1,100, bigger than that. And it's not all education, those are all bills. There really is a sense of frustration, I think, from some areas of the state that, you know, use the bills to continue the mandates, unfunded mandates continuing to come. Biggest part is taking away the local control of school boards to make decisions for the community. So quite a conversation in IAS, the Superintendent Association Division meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I think that's something for me to keep an eye on, you know, in terms of what my colleagues stand, but also Board of Education and I'm sure IAS will get involved if that's the stance that some boards start to take. So just something to kind of keep on the radar.
I think in Eric's background, I served on the statewide commission for the history curriculum. And the legislators that were involved with that were the leaders in the House and the Senate. And we were, it was all virtual for what, six months, five months? But the majority leader in the House at the third meeting said, "Great, now we at least have a curriculum that we can manage." And the superintendent, Don Leek, who was chairing the committee, said, "You know, Ms. Lightford, we're not a mandate state, it's a standard state. We teach to a standard, we give them what they, resources and they, as a local group, decide how they reach those standards." He goes, "That's not what it's like." That just tells me how many, not all, but how many legislators are completely out of touch with what school districts do. I think ours are a little more in touch than Ms. Lightford, for sure. But she had no idea, she thought, "We're mandating exactly what I want every kid to learn, what I, Ms. Lightford wants to have." And it's just, you know, crazy. If you start to see coalitions, you're seeing what the sheriffs are doing, right and wrong, and I'm not going to comment on that. But I think if you start to see like the large block of high schools, you know, that are friends and the, if they start forming coalitions, you're going to go, "You're going to shut us all down?" I don't think so. So I think there's going to be some pushback. It may take a few years to get there, but I think it's ready. It's coming, people are kind of fed up with being told what to do all the time, not having any choices.
Got to that threat level maybe during the pandemic as well. So it's, it's been boiling in a number of areas and.
Yeah, I think it could be coming. And I have, I have a couple of those school clients that are small but wealthy for their small little region, KED districts. And one of them, I don't say which one it is, but they only, they only get about $9,800 a year from the state. Because they're wealthy and they don't qualify for certain things and they have good tax rates and, you know, it's the most agricultural little KED district of like 170 kids. And he goes, "For $9,800 bucks in your state, you can go up on the sand, I don't meet any of their mandates." So and he, that particular superintendent's more happy to do that, so. So I do think it's kind of, I think it was enlightening to me to hear that, that IAS was talking about the potential of that coming down the pipe.
For many years, the superintendents are a group that, you know, voiced that frustration and we need to hear some, you know, moving potentially beyond that. I mean, Carrick's always been funding. So if you don't follow these mandates, you're not compliant, so we're going to put your funding. Well, school districts like that or large school districts that live in affluent areas or located in affluent areas, they get little to no funding from the state. That's where I think we'll see it, sorry. So one policy I want to, I do want to point out, policy 7200 was not part of the press policy revision from the, from School Board Association. This is one that we've discussed as an administrative team and that we're asking the board to go through the one small change. That has to do with the timeline for suspension appeals. So we don't have any language in policy. We have some practice, but that's a little different from elementary, that middle school, high school. So we've just included that there's a five-day window, a five-day calendar day, not five school day window from when a suspension is received by the parent guardian that would trigger a review or appeal. So we've included that. That's the only policy change that wasn't part of the press policy change. And that will show up next week also.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
So, yeah.
All right. Uh, Janine, open discussion and future agenda. And entertaining a a motion to go in executive session for consideration of matters related to appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel in eminent litigation.
Chella?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Run?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Marshall Harry?
We'll take a few minutes and then we'll go into executive session and return to the vote after. I have a motion to approve the personnel.
Second.
Roll call?
David?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Run?
Yes.
Chella?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Marshall Harry?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, we'll stand adjourned.